Thank you and welcome to the September 4th meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I get a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Donald Sakowski.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Testor O'Galevitz.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of August 7th?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of August 2nd. Is there any amendments or further comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions or objections?
I'll abstain.
Anybody over on this side? No extensions? Okay. Now we approach what's called the public speak time. This is where we welcome the public to speak and address the council on any items that are currently not on our public hearing agenda. If there are any members who wish to do so, please state your name and address and step forward. Welcome up. Yes, all of us up here know who you are, but we love to hear you.
There, or I can stand there.
There, please.
My name is Ellen DeQuallik, 51 Taft Avenue. Been a resident of East Hampton, 60 years plus. Registered voter, taxpayer, and think there's some things in East Hampton that don't need to happen. Lately, there's been a big push on a walkway, boats, whatever, around the Nashuanic. If anybody needs to walk or wheelchairs, we got beautiful None at the Park. Then Pascomic Trust, they've got a great two places. Off of Mount Tom Avenue, that one's a little tough. And then down at the end of Pleasant Street, that one is a great one. You might bump into a couple of wild turkeys, which I have. And then we got the rail trail. You can go all the way to Hamp. You can even go to stop and shop to buy your food and let them stay in Hamp. We don't need them in East Hampton. And then you just can go up the mountain. There's plenty of places over there in the mountain. Who's going to maintain that walkway? Are the DPW going to take care of it? We're going to get snow and ice. Is the park and rec going to have to take care of it? Is the liability going to go up? Where are these vehicles going to park? When they come with their trailers? Or are these cars with their kayaks on it? Well, I know East Hampton employees don't work on Friday. But then again, the parking lot? Where is you going to throw out? The farmer's market? How about the kids that have fundraisers using the, for car washes? The high school kids and other organizations? What are they going to do? No parking in Brookside Cemetery. And as it is, that walkway's going to encroach on Brookside Cemetery. That's a cemetery. There's so much money to be used for that. Let's use it where it really should be used. We got two historical great buildings in East Hampton. Built by the WPA in the 30s. I don't know exactly what year. I wasn't here then. I just came in to the world. And Daly Field, that building, it needs some slate on the roof. As you're going to the ladies' room, some of the rocks are gone. They should be replaced. The ladies' room, there's no windows. There's no glass. And these toilets and that should be updated. I've never been in the men's room, but I sit there and watch the softball. One guy came walking out and he's muttering and he's sputtering. He said, "That place is disgusting." Well, got to take his word for it. I haven't been in there. The other beautiful building, built in the 30s by the WPA, Brookside Cemetery. That needs some slate repaired on the roof. That's got two big sections in the front. Their stones should be repaired. They didn't allow winter burials years ago, so that's what that building was for. They stocked them in there and then they buried them in the spring. Now, historical. Brookside Cemetery is very historical. If you ever take a walk through there, you'll see the stones of when people were buried there. That roadway is in the disgusting condition. There's big holes. And of course, little patchwork, but then the law says you have to have concrete vaults. So when the trucks come with their vaults, there goes your patchwork. And then those poor people that are going for their final resting place, they must say to themselves, "What the hell's going on? I'm bouncing around like hell in this vehicle." So I suggest, instead of wasting our money on a walkway, oh yeah, where are they going to park these? Oh yeah, I said that already. Where are they going to park these vehicles, these, that got the trailers with their boats? And the cars that got the canoes on? Where are they going to park? So, I think that's a big waste of money. A lot of people have said, "But they're chicken to get up and say anything." So I think, let's just put that somewhere down. The congregational church is looking for money? That's a historical building. Let the CPA or whatever that they take out of my taxes, let it be used for something that is historical. Don't add any more burdens onto the East Hampton taxpayer. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Really no questioning of?
No, no, it's not a question. I just, as a comment, Mrs. Quallik, I just want to remind you, I'm the representative to the CPA, and I know you spoke also in front of the CPA. And I, our rules are, we don't really make comments pro or con of what someone says. But just to remind you, they did move the meeting up, and the CPA is taking that up on their agenda again tomorrow night. So I just wanted to give you that.
Well, I can come and give a push for it.
Right, I know you spoke at the last one. I just wanted to remind you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Eleanor. Is there any other member of the public who would like to step forward and address the council concerning any item that's currently not on our public hearing agenda? Please raise your hand and step forward and attend. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to communications. And up from elected official boards and committees and correspondents, Council McCoy.
Yes, thank you. One brief communication we had, we did have, received a letter from a citizen just concerning ideas about further potential future use for the Parson Street School project. That's an ongoing discussion, but this letter is obviously available for public reading at the city clerk's office. And I'm sure if you have ideas of your own, the planning board would be happy to hear. If you have any ideas about the Parson Street School project, the surplus property of the Parson Street. The other thing I'd like to mention, more of a public service here, is reminding everybody that we have municipal election coming up. We do have spaces available for city, for school committee. So if you're interested in serving on the school committee, please consider it. The date to get the papers back in are September 17th. So you still have time to get your signatures to be part of the school committee. And certainly both at-large and district council races, same date, September 17th. So you have an interest in serving your community, whether it be school committee or city council. You have time to get your papers in, so consider it. Thank you. End of report, I believe.
Thank you. Mayor Communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have two items in your packet from my office. The first, I think all of you have seen this multiple times. This is the statement of total education funding that's contained in the fiscal year 2014 budget. This and a recap that in recent years has been provided by the finance director are provided to the public because we need to record this information for school funding purposes. And ultimately, the final spending, the report that will come from the finance director about final spending, in this instance in 2013, will be a part of the school's annual report to the state. Just, I know you, it's very lengthy, and you probably read it from cover to cover, but essentially it says that the city funded the education in East Hampton Public Schools at $20.7 million, inclusive of all costs. That makes up about 67% of the general fund budget in the 2014 operating budget.
Are there any questions for Mike before we move on to the next item?
No.
There?
The other item is essentially informational, and it is for job well done. As you probably are aware, we have been waiting for a new grant to come in. And in the interim between these block grants that we get, staffing in the grants department gets a little dicey. Dicey by that, by that I mean that there's not enough money to support all of the positions because the grants are winding down. And this memo was to Sue Penna, who is our community development block grant coordinator. She is actually the grant staff person at this point in time. And she's done a wonderful job in closing out the 11 grant, and that's what this is related to. But I wanted to kind of point out, and we, these letters happen internally quite a lot. But since this one came from my office, I thought I would share it with you. We have a lot of very dedicated employees here in the community, and they do yeoman's work. They aren't often recognized, and I just wanted to bring this one in particular to your attention. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We got a couple minutes to do a couple reports here. Our reports, sustaining committees, rules and government relations.
No report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Hagan, Finance.
Yes, first, next meeting of Finance will be next Wednesday, which will be September 11th at 6:00 PM in Rule 1. At that time, we'll be taking up the senior work-off program. And in regards to that, I'm going to need another 30-day extension. So in the form of a motion, I'd like to ask for a 30-day extension on the senior work-off program.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend a 30-day extension of the senior work-off program. Is there any further comment or additions to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? Motion passes.
That concludes Finance. I know there is one item in New Business, but I could take it up in New Business.
Okay, fair enough. Council McCoy, Public Safety.
Yes, thank you. We have some results to report. We, the Public Safety Committee met a couple weeks ago. We took up three issues. One of them was the question about parking complaint on Union Court, where it was difficult for a High Street resident to see onto High Street from Union Court. We met with the chief of police and discussed the issue. He had been there several times and only once saw a vehicle big enough to be blocking the view. And his more concern was that lot that where Union Court goes out onto High Street is actually a private property. And so there was a concern that if they blocked that off, so it was no longer a thruway, traffic would have to go through out Union Court, next to that gym, and the visibility out of there is even less. So his recommendation was not to change any of the parking as it stands on High Street and right around that Union Court intersection. So the vote, the committee voted 3 to 0 to remove this item from our agenda with no prejudice. So in the form of a motion, I would like to remove that request for the parking on Union Court from our agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend removal of this parking complaint on Union Court from the Public Safety agenda. Is there any comment on this motion? I do have one. Any member of the public show up for your hearing to?
No, the complaint, the complainant didn't, and there were two, actually, two meetings that that topic would have overlapped, and he wasn't able, or he did not. He was aware of it, because I know the city clerk made him aware of it, but he did not attend.
Thank you. Any other further comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? I will abstain.
Okay. On the next topic, we had another stop sign request. This was from David Garska Building Corporation. They are developing a development, and they are going to put in a street. And the wording in relation to them developing that development, that they need to initiate the process with the city council for the placement of a stop sign at the corner of Paul Street and Beachwood Avenue. So that was the topic that we had addressed, if a stop sign was warranted at that place. We had communications, chief of police was again there. We had written communications from the city engineer. And at this time, both of them agreed that there was no need for a stop sign at that intersection. The Public Safety Committee agreed, and I also spoke with the city planner concerning that this would indeed fulfill their initiation of the process for a stop sign. And we will send a letter from the president and the council stating such, that as far as the council is concerned, that they have satisfied their requirement to initiate the process. We did, we also, the request will be to remove this without prejudice, because there is going to be a walking trail being developed in that area. So it is possible that in the future, a stop sign may be worthwhile at that location. But at this point, from both the chief of police and the city engineer, it was not recommended to put one there at this time. So again, similar last one, I would like to make a motion to remove the request for the stop sign at the Paul Street Extension, Beachwood Avenue, from our agenda without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend removal of the Paul Street Extension at Beachwood Avenue stop sign proposal from the Public Safety agenda without prejudice. Is there any further comment on this motion?
I do have one brief comment.
Okay.
The vote from committee was 3 to 0.
It's 3 to 0 again, yes.
Okay. Any further comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, and then one more, this will be a continuation of the top. This was also a request for a stop sign at the Garfield-Hisken Avenue intersection. This was brought forth by a resident, a citizen of Council Derby's precinct. And Council Derby attended the meeting. The question was over speeding, and the chief of police did two separate two-week speed studies and found only one or two person exceeding the speed, and both of them were ticketed. His opinion was that at this time, we do not need a stop sign at that intersection. There was, raised by Council Derby, that that intersection can be unsafe, and that he saw, he was with, riding some teenagers, and he saw one ride through, through the stop sign from Hisken Avenue without stopping. So there is some safety concerns there. So with further discussion, the chief of police is going to, again, not so much repeating from the speed aspect, but because of the reconfiguration of maybe pedestrian traffic related to the new high school, to see if traffic has changed there and maybe additional, if, safety signage or possibly a stop sign would be, would be recommended. But so that, that discussion is continuing, and we will probably be addressing it again sometime in October. So I think, I believe I have enough time, yes, on that, so I don't need to ask for a request, but?
At this point, yeah.
At this point, but right now, this, that is a continuing, and has not been resolved. And that concludes.
Thank you. I'm going to apologize to Council Winnie. We're going to go into a public hearing. Could I have a motion later, public hearing, please?
No apologies necessary.
Move that we open the public hearing.
Not at all.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to open the public hearing section. Councilor Derby, you're up first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, we didn't vote, I'm sorry. We have a motion on the table to open up the public hearing. Thank you, I told you I was a little rusty. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None? Thank you very much, the motion passes. Council Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have in front of us tonight is a proposal to amend Chapter 7 Classification and Pay Plan of Employees Exhibit A by adding four separate positions, three of them at the council aging, one of them through the planning department for the arts coordinator. And I think what I'll do is I'll take the arts coordinator one first. Just to let everybody know, we did meet on these, and all of the interested parties came in and gave us their position on why these were important. And all of them were voted in the affirmative 2 to 1, with one dissenting on all four of these. That being said, I think I'll invite members of the public up to, to speak, unless anybody has any questions, or I can even have the mayor or Jessica or?
I would like the members of the public to speak first, Mike. That's okay. Is there any member of the public would like to speak first on these issues? Please step forward.
Am I not a member of the public?
You're the city planner, but I'd like to give the public the first opportunity.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Morrison. I live on 24 Winter Street. I moved to East Hampton nine years ago, attracted to the pond, the park, the bike path, and Cottage Street. What I have discovered about this city during my years of residence is that it is a city that values the arts and the role the arts play in the economic health of East Hampton. In 2013 alone, ECA Plus has spearheaded the successful Cottage Street Cultural District designation, received funding for two years through the Adams Grant, helped to fund the Art in the Orchard Sculpture Trail, organized and funded the creation of two sculptural bike packs, bike racks, excuse me, and created ongoing programming that brings artists, audiences, and funding opportunities together, and continue to support and invigorate the monthly art walks. That's just this year. Much of this was done with the cooperation and collaboration of city offices and departments. I have never been disappointed by any decisions made by the city that impact the greater cultural community. Don't disappoint me now. Move the ECA Plus Coordinator position into the city's pay plan. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. In addition, I have a letter that was given to me to read by someone who had to leave. Is that okay if I read that also? Very short.
If you can give me a brief, yep.
Short letter.
Please do so.
Promise.
The clerk would like a copy for?
Yes, I will do that. Dear Mr. Cobb and the entire East Hampton City Council, I am writing in support of the East Hampton City Arts Plus Arts Coordinator position becoming part of the city's pay plan. My family and I are recent, four years ago, transplants from New York City. We were a couple of city mice moving to the country, looking for a place to set down roots and start a family. Much to our delight, we discovered the thriving arts community here in East Hampton, and that delight led us to purchase our home right here in East Hampton. With support from the East Hampton Cultural Council, I collaborated with the Pioneer Valley Ballet Company and created a dance video for Bear Fest 12. We shot the video both in downtown East Hampton and atop Mount Tom. As a media artist, I am inspired by East Hampton's natural beauty and the thriving arts community here. I am currently on the East Hampton Cultural Council, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to support the East Hampton's burgeoning creative economy. I am looking forward to a future here in East Hampton where I can continue making art that celebrates East Hampton and contributes to its vibrant and creative community. As a property owner, a new parent, and an engaged citizen of East Hampton, I am asking the city council to both recognize and support the key role ECA Plus plays in making East Hampton both a destination and a place to call home by making the Arts Coordinators position a permanent part of the city's pay plan. That's from, this is from Andrea Marks, 2 South Hampshire Street in East Hampton. Thank you.
Is there any other members of the public who would like to step forward and address the council's issue? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for letting me speak. I didn't know I was going to speak. I did not know this was the subject up tonight. I'm here for yet another item that is coming up. But if I didn't come forward and say how significant it is to have a coordinator of the arts in the city of the dynamism of burns, I would be remiss. So I just wanted to say that it's economically a dynamic part of the city. If I talk to anyone who is concerned or invested about the culture and the arts of their city and any other town, they begrudgingly have a lot of envy of what's happening in this town right now. And I'm aware of a dynamism that just is ongoing, and I hope you'll all support it as an integral part of the whole way the city works. So thank you.
Before you leave, could I ask that you identify yourself, name and address?
I'm Will Bundy. I'm a business owner. I'm the owner of Eastworks. Thank you.
Any other member of the public who would like to step forward? Seeing none? Would the city planner like to address the council? If the councilor is okay with that.
Just some nuts and bolts. I, I can't follow the passion that, that was just spoken. And, and, but just to give you a sense of, of the numbers, this is a position that's a 35-hour-a-week position. It already has benefits. It's already in the state retirement system. It, this is, this just needs to be the next step in, in getting this position to be in the city's pay plan. To me, it seems like a no-brainer, just to make that happen.
Thank you. Council Derby, would you like the mayor to?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mike Towznick. I want to speak more holistically about the issue. All of these positions exist. A couple of them existed for a very long time. They have been funded in the past and currently through a combination of grants and local appropriations. There's nothing new about any of these four positions. What's new is that we want to treat these employees the same way we treat all the rest of our employees. It's new to you because these we recognize to be permanent sorts of positions. These are positions that need to be here to serve the population, whether it's the, the ECA Arts Coordinator and the economic development activity that you've heard about, or whether it's to support positions within the council on aging. They're necessary positions. These are permanent, permanent employees, some full, some part-time. We spent, I think, a lot of time talking about funding during the budget cycle. And so there is, in, in small ways, funding for these positions within the budget as well as support from grants. So I just wanted to clarify, and I think you're all aware, these aren't new positions. They are newly being requested to go into the pay plan so that these employees can be treated the same way that all the rest of our employees are. Anyone who works the minimum required time, which is 20 hours, gets to qualify for benefits. They get to qualify for retirement, whether they're in the pay plan or not. But the rest of the, the employee's relationship with the community is shorted if we don't include them into the pay plan. Then they become, they become a part of our staff. If we include them in the pay plan, they, they're just blowing in the wind if we don't. It's just a fairness issue at this point. I can talk at length about any of these positions. I think you've probably heard about all of them. To be quite honest, I want to talk about one, though, the receptionist position. There was a grade five position in the council on aging prior to the budget crunch in 2009. And so that position was eliminated at the same time that we reduced the hours in this building. This return of grade one position is, it's a much lower valued position to try to do a part of what that grade five position did. We are not asking for that grade five position to come back. So really, this, this is a pared-down request from the council on aging. And it has full support from the board and from the director.
Before you go, does anybody, any councilor here have any questions for the mayor?
Just one quick question, Mayor. Does it, I'm supportive of all these positions, but does it give us any more legal obligation by putting them on the pay plan? In other words, if a grant should run out and, and we didn't, we wanted to take, we'll just, we'll use the arts one because it's a full-time. And we lost half of it, I guess we paid $25,000 and we get a, or approximately in the Adams Grant or whatever. Say we lost that grant, you wanted to go back, or the next administration wanted to go back and make it a part-time position. Do we have any additional legal obligation?
Yeah, there are, there are no contractual responsibilities tied to this. It's really just clarifying the benefits. We, these employees are, I think, generally provided the same benefits now anyway. So this just gets them into the pay plan. All positions are subject to appropriation. So at any time, if there's not sufficient funds for any of the positions that exist in the community, with the exception of yours, mine, and the school committee members, and the superintendent, as required by law, the positions can be eliminated because they're not funded. We still would pay the same obligations to any, if you laid someone off, you owe them. And it doesn't matter whether, for example, a position that's fully funded by a grant, if we lay that person off and there's no grant to pay the unemployment, we still pay the unemployment. The city, city is the employer. Doesn't matter to the state, from a benefit perspective, whether the funds came from a, a local tax dollars, or they came from grant money, or they came from donations. We would still be responsible for that employee's severance or, or unemployment benefits.
Okay, any other questions for the mayor? Seeing none, Council Derby.
Okay, um, you know, I, I guess I'll just say that through the discussions, it, it became apparent to the committee that this is a very important position, and a lot of good work has been done, and we wanted to ensure that, that was reflected with our commitment in the pay plan. So again, that was a 2 to 1. And one final thing before I move this, we did receive two letters, one from? We did receive two letters, one from Doris Madsen in support of this position, and one from Denise Riggs in support of this position. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I believe the city clerk has copies of these letters. So, maybe, it looks like Counsel Salkowski has a minority report.
Because, I just want to get out there because mine was a dissenting vote, and it comes down to priorities for this community. Every one who is sitting here at this table, in our precincts, there's roads that are falling apart. Eleanor, this evening, brought up about the cemetery roads. They're horrendous. The whole thing of it is, if we can always find money for positions, why can't we find money for roads? That's our number-one priority right now. That's public safety. We're dropping the ball. At one time, the excise tax used to go for that. In the wisdom of the state, because Proposition 2 and 1/2 passed, they let it use it for something else. But the thing of it is, the smart thing, say 15, 20, 30 percent of that budget still should be going for the roads. And the thing of it is, we can't keep hiring staff, no matter what the thing of it is. And I think, Michael brought up, I didn't know anything about the layoff procedure and unemployment insurance. But I'm sure there must be a way that they sign a contract that once, once the job is done, they're gone, and that's it, and there's no liabilities to the town for unemployment insurance. I just, I don't know, but I mean, I just got a funny feeling that way. And the thing of it is, I'm going to vote no for, on all four of these positions because the priorities have to be, for the roads and some of the other conditions in this town, other infrastructure problems we have. We're not seeming to address, address them by hiring people. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to respond, or...
Yeah, just, you know, this, this came up at our committee meeting. And the way that I see it is that all of these things are connected. You know, we do have some roads that are in need of repair. However, you know, if we have a, you know, booming, vibrant art scene in East Hampton, that's going to draw people to East Hampton. That's going to draw people into our galleries. It's going to keep attracting artists. It's going to keep bringing people in from out of town who might buy a house and fix up a house, and that's going to be a net gain to our economy locally. So, I don't think that these things are separate. I think in order to keep moving forward, we have to be thinking forward, and I think that this does that. So...
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess I would take a little disagreement with Counsel Salkowski. Three, three of these positions are from the Council of Aging, and I can't imagine a more needy population that I would certainly over, you know, aging, Council of Aging Coordinator, Receptionist, Outreach Worker, I would, I'm sorry, I would still put the needs of that population over potholes. And I know we do our best with Chapter Monday, 90 Money as we can, but I will certainly be voting for all those. And then, lastly, for the Department Arts Coordinator, you know, I think there are a lot of communities that have arts, you know, directors and are not as successful as ours. And so, I would, I wish we were voting on here to make Burns sign a 10-year contract or something. I think this, we are so lucky to have such an exceptional ECA. This, we can call them whatever they want, but they're miracle workers, you know. If you do the Orchard and the Park, I think that's brilliant. I don't know whose idea it was, but that's brilliant, and it brings people in. I was talking to people that live across the street, and they have weddings that come up and stand on those, you know, frames and stuff. And so, I think, I think we are so lucky to have such a creative and dedicated. And I also believe that does bring in income. I think it brings in income to, whether it be from the storefront to the person who wants to live in East Hampton who starts paying property tax. You know, I don't think that's a waste of money. I think that is making this community better and stronger and making, giving us more money. Hopefully, we can put back towards some streets. But so, I will certainly vote in favor of all for these positions. Thanks.
Counsel Salk, Counsel Ziegler first. Let Ziegler go first.
Well, I was in favor in subcommittee of all the positions also, but again, specifically for the arts. It's about the sense of community. Just seeing what the Bear Fest has done in the last few years and the number of people who are, have been out and walking around on the streets, whether they're from outside, you know, bringing money into the local shops and ice cream parlors, if you will, or wherever. But just having, you know, friends and neighbors out walking around and being on the street. That is, again, something that we want to value here in East Hampton, is that we are a community, a walkable community. We have a business district that you can walk into, and again, with the, the open studios. I mean, there are so many people and friends and relatives from out of state who come up just for that time to, to celebrate the artists that we have in East Hampton. So, I'm 100% behind this.
Counsel Salkowski.
I only have one more, one more statement, and I'll quit. Come to East Hampton to buy a house, to walk around, if you're a visitor from out of town, please don't hit a pothole. Okay? That's how bad our roads are.
Thank you. Counsel Winnie?
I've lived here my whole life, and I saw Cottage Street, Union Street, growing up as a child, being able to go to W.C. Grants, being able to shop at AMP, being able to go to the shoe store on Cottage Street where my mom would buy my shoes for school for the beginning of the year, to Lazots where my dad would get his dress shirts, and my grandfather, to having a very vibrant downtown, to seeing the vibrant downtown with the closing of Lesnows and Stanley Home Products and all of our big factories that employed, I would say probably 85 to 90 percent of our people that lived in East Hampton, to seeing all of the stores board up, become apartments on Cottage Street, Main Street. Nothing has warmed my heart more in the 54 years that I've lived in this city to see shops opening, seeing people walking in downtown and going into the shops and enjoying it, people coming from out of town to, to come to our restaurants, people coming to Eastworks to take ballet lessons and visit the shops that are in there, the Registry of Motor Vehicles. I mean, the city is booming. And anything that we can do to support that, I'm all for. And I said it right along when, when they came for the window money for, to redo Riverside Industries. That's the center of our city. We want that to look good. We want to revitalize East Hampton. That's what's going to draw the people in. And I, I'll tell you, I work in Northampton, and I've got people coming to me, "Oh, you live in East Hampton? Boy, that's really, that's really booming over there." And it's like, "Yeah, it is. It is." And so, anything to cur, to, to get in the way of curtailing the boom that we're experiencing, I'm just not going to be able to support. So, you know, supporting our arts and supporting especially our seniors, it is the biggest population as us baby boomers move into our, our third trimester of life before our fourth and fifth and sixth. I just, I just can't see why any of us would not want to vote against this. And as far as our, our Chapter 90 Money, that's behooving onto the state. And the state has cut us on our, our schools, on our roads, and everything else, and, and it's unfortunate. But I really believe that as our cities and our towns grow and start bringing in income, that then does affect the state coffers. And it's, it's all relevant. Salem is absolutely right. It's all relevant, and you've got to look at the big picture. So, I'm going to be voting for these three proposals, and I, and I think it's a, it's a great step forward.
Thank you. Any other comment? Counsel Rist?
Well, most of our, the colleagues in favor of this has already spoken eloquently on it. I'll just say that as an artist myself, I have seen the incredible growth of arts, arts organizations moving to East Hampton primarily because mill owners such as Mr. Bundy and other mill owners who are turning their old factory buildings into beautiful studio space at a very low cost compared to cities like Northampton, which prior to East Hampton's growth in the arts community had been the Mecca for artists. Well, that's changed. And when we have this growth in our community of all these artists coming in, you absolutely need to have a coordinator who can help them establish themselves, go through the process of, that's necessary for permitting in the government, and to do the other programs that attract people to our community, all of which is economic development. And the economic development that comes increases businesses who want to be a part of this, and that increases tax base, which increases tax dollars for roads. So, for the minuscule amount of money that we are dedicating to the Arts Coordinator position, I agree, it is an increase, but it's very minor compared to the amount of money that I see coordination of the arts bringing into this community. It's hard to perhaps put a tangible dollar figure on that development, but it is extensive. That is a dollar well-spent on this salary. And I just, I, I respect Counsel Salkowski and others on the council who worry about the creep of government positions, but these are small potatoes. And for the Council on Aging positions, our seniors deserve the service, the small amount of service we can give them. They've lived here, most of them, their whole lives. They deserve to have a senior center. They can go and feel comfortable and be welcomed by these positions, which serve them. It would be a disservice to that community of seniors if we decided we should not fund these positions in the future and also bring them into the pay plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hagan?
I'll be very brief. I'll definitely support the arts position. I will also support the seniors when they come up, because I don't see a direct correlation that Counselor Salkowski is trying to make. But I will say in, in, as a general statement to all the counselors, as we move forward, infrastructure in this city does need improvement. And I think we all should think long and hard as we go forward in the next few months and into the next year of maybe some new innovative ways to try to bring our infrastructure up because all the good that's done in the city by bringing in the arts, if our roads continue to deteriorate, you can see it start to erode. So, I, while I definitely don't see the correlation here, will support these, I do think at least that we should, looking forward, we should all try to come up and along with the new administration for some, maybe some innovative ways to try to improve our roads.
Okay. Any other further comment? Counsel Derby, I have one question for you. What we are actually voting on is a change in the ordinance, not the actual funding of these positions. I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. With that understanding, I will state this, that I was also one of those individuals who was hesitant because there is a slight cost to the city. And I also know that people from the outside who are looking, who have lost jobs or who have jobs have been defunded and have been laid off, look at this with concern. That said, I also received an overwhelming of support for these positions, and I have been swayed and will vote in favor of this motion tonight. Counsel Derby, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I would like to move that we amend Chapter 7, Classification and Pay Plan, Section 7-17A, Exhibit A, Classification Plan by adding the position of Planning Department Arts Coordinator position at pay grade nine.
So, can't we do them all at once? Okay. We have, excuse me? We're doing them one at a time?
We're doing them one at a time.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table to recommend an amendment to state ordinances as just previously mentioned. Is there any further comment on that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any abstentions or objections? No. Thank you.
And if the city clerk doesn't object, I could move the next three together.
Sure.
And I just want to say that, so that the next three positions are positions at the Council of Aging, an Activity Director, a Receptionist at pay grade one, and the Outreach Worker at pay grade three, which is, the Outreach Worker is a, is a critical service that the Council on Aging provides. And, and all of these, just to clarify, are funded in the budget. So, there would not need to be any new funding for these. So, if anybody has any questions, or we can...
Any questions for the council on these three positions?
Okay.
Seeing none? Counsel Derby, you have the floor.
All right, so I would like to move to amend Chapter 7, Classification and Pay Plan, Section 17, or 7-17A, Exhibit A, Classification and Pay Plan by adding the following positions. Council on Aging Outreach Worker Assistant at pay grade three. Council on Aging Activity Director at pay grade three. Council on Aging Receptionist at pay grade one.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to amend city ordinances, Chapter 7, Section 17, 17A, concerning by adding the following positions, Council on Aging Outreach Worker Assistant, pay grade three. Council on Aging Receptionist, pay grade one. Council on Aging Activity Coordinator, pay grade three. Is there any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? Counsel Hagan, you have the floor.
Just one quick comment. During the budget process, myself and Counsel Cobb met with the senior citizens when they thought they might be losing some of these positions, and they were a very vociferous group. And I will highly support this.
You don't want to be vociferous today.
As will I.
And one last thing, the, the committee recommended this to me.
Thank you. Any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? No. Do we note it? Thank you. Motion passes. Includes Counsel Derby. Counsel Salkowski, you have the floor for the next public hearing.
I do, huh? Well, we just received this, this evening, the packet with the changes in it for the agreement between the Pleasant Street Mill Owners and the city. And it seems to me, we're just pursuing that just for a few minutes when we got this packet, because we didn't have it early. Seems like there's only one change, the Mill Owner won, and et cetera. Since the mill owners are here this evening, I'd like to ask them if they had to come to the podium and, and to talk about this, to see if they checked this agreement out with their attorney. And it's perfect this time because I heard from a good source that a business agreement what to sign could never be amended. So, I just want to make sure that you people are satisfied.
Please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I was actually going to ask Justice to come up to explain the changes from the previous agreements, if you'd like to do that first.
I'm going to do that first. So, from the previous agreements, none of the main language has changed at all. The only thing that was missing from the previous agreements was under the Notices section. There were some blanks in regards to who in the city would be notified, or who of the mill owners would be notified, what's the notification procedure, and what's the address. So, those blanks needed to be filled in. That's the only difference from the last agreements that you had to this one. This, the, the city attorney wanted you to have the complete agreements before you actually voted on them. So, even though the holes were minor, he wanted those holes filled in. There were also a couple of, of minor typos on the maps. Pleasant was spelled wrong. I wanted those to be fixed before you actually saw them.
Okay. Are there any questions for the city planner before we continue?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any members of the public who would like to step forward and address the council on this issue? Please do so. State your name and address for the record.
That's you, Mark.
Mayor.
Mayor Mike, please step up.
He didn't want to get outside of the public.
Yeah.
I think you all know, I've been intimately involved in discussing the language with the property owners and working through the language so that it's mutually beneficial to both parties. This is a win-win situation for everyone. This is a $2.75 million grant that we're implementing to make it safer, both for our, our public safety response, as well as for the people that are in and own the mill buildings. It's also, it really does lead us down a path of developing that area between the Bike Path and the Mills, which was at one time the front of those mills, to become an entrance to those properties again. It's, it's a huge improvement to Pleasant Street. It's the beginning of a longer process, but, but these easements lay out the relationship between the private and public sector in this area of town from here moving forward. And it's true, easements are difficult to change once they're executed, but if all the parties agree, they certainly can be changed. I have lots of comments about any particular sections. If you have questions, I'm not going to go into that right now, but I certainly am supportive of it, and if you approve, I will sign all, all of these easements.
Are there any questions for the mayor on the, on these easements?
Well, the only thing I want to find out is if the mill owners are satisfied with the agreement this time. That's the only thing I want to know.
Okay. The owners would please step forward. I will ask you to state your name and address for the record again, but that's it.
Will Bundy. I'm the owner of Eastworks.
Thank you.
And, yes, my lawyer read it.
Okay.
And he found one spelling mistake. So, I think we're happy with it.
Is there an agreement? We're good to go.
Everyone's in agreement, and, and the mayor has aptly articulated all the attributes of the agreement.
Excellent.
So, thank you all.
Yeah, I'm satisfied. I'm ready to move on this issue.
Okay. If there's any other member of the public who would like to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, Counsel Salkowski.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we agreed to the easement agreement between the Pleasant Street mill owners and the city.
Council Seikowski, we're giving a motion to read.
Where I haven't got it.
Pass that down to me.
Like usual, I don't get any of the paperwork.
It was in your box.
Oh, in my box. I picked my stuff up the other day. I move the city council authorize the mayor to execute easement agreements with the following mill owners in accordance with the five easement agreements made available at this meeting, including the related plans all dated June 25, 2013. Owner, Eastworks, LLLP, 116 Pleasant Street, map E1. Kepler, LLC, 142 Pleasant Street, E2A. Sullivan, LLC, 121, 122, 125, 136, and 148, rear Pleasant Street, E2B. Interland Real Estate, 172 and 180 Pleasant Street, E3. Three Kingdoms, LLC, 188 Pleasant Street, E4.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the following easement agreements made available at this meeting, including the related plans. We all have copies. Eastworks, LLLP, 116 Pleasant Street, map number E1. Kefra, LLC, 142 Pleasant Street, map number E2A. Sullivan, East Hampton, LLC, property addresses 121, 122, 125, 136, 148, and the rear of Pleasant Street, E, map E2B. Interland Real Estate, LLC, 172 and 180 Pleasant Street, E3. And Three Kingdoms, LLC, 188 Pleasant Street, on map E4, as was presented tonight. Is there any further comment on this motion? Council Derby?
A couple things. I just wanna say that out of the subcommittee, this was recommended three to zero.
Good.
And as far as, I was concerned sitting in, I felt like this is a win-win for the city. And, you know, one of the highlights that stood out in my mind was the above-ground power lines are gonna be placed underground, which will allow the fire trucks to move to the back of the buildings and use their buckets, which I think is a, is a big safety improvement for everybody. So that's just one of the things I wanted to say. And I also wanted to say that I believe this has to be a two-thirds vote.
Mm. That's correct.
It does, it's at least, it's an easement, I mean.
Okay. That said, I myself do have a comment. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting on this. I will say I can't speak highly enough for this actually particular, these easement requests, because what it means for the city of East Hampton, what it means for the residents that are gonna be living here, what it means for the mill owners that are gonna be living there, the safety and infrastructure improvements are just something that is so long overdue that I'm thrilled to see us going forward with this. Is there any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Okay, that meets our two-thirds requirement. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there any further comment on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna continue with reports sustaining committees, and Council Winnie, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met tonight, it's 5:45, on the five mayoral appointments that were presented to us on August 7. Four of the mayoral appointments have to do with the Energy Advisory Committee, which was an administrative order that the city council created a little while back, and one is for the Housing Partnership. All five were reviewed tonight, and the motion came forth out of the appointment subcommittee with affirmative three to zero to bring the five appointments forward to city council for approval. So with that being said, I'd like to make this in the form of a motion, that the following people be appointed to the following committees. Marin Goldstein to the Energy Advisory Committee with the term of expiration of that appointment of December 31, 2016. Robert Parent, Energy Advisory Committee, 12/31/16. Ron Malloin, Energy Advisory Committee, 12/31/15. Stephen Judd, Energy Advisory Committee, 12/31/15. And Catherine Croll to the Housing Partnership with the appointment expiration of 12/31/2016.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval, the aforementioned five mayoral appointments for the Energy Advisory Committee and one for the Housing Partnership. Is there any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Council Winnie, do you have anything further?
I do. Our next meeting will be on September 18 at 5:45 in council chambers to review the mayoral appointment that is in new business.
Kate?
Would you like me to take care of that now, Mr. President, or wait?
We'll, we'll wait, this time. That concludes it at this moment?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance, Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have to announce tonight is the ordinance subcommittee will be having a joint public hearing with the planning board on Tuesday, September 10 at 6:00 p.m. in the basement of 50 Pace.
Do we know what the agenda item will be?
It is your agenda item, special permit, changes.
Kate, that concludes?
That concludes.
Okay. Property, Council Seikowski?
Well, we're down to the request for the authorization to depart the three school property, and that's, that's a continuing process right now. That's the end of the report.
Thank you. That said, there's no whole business, new business. Council McCoy, I guess you have the first, first up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll take two of the issues here. First, I'd like to move to public safety, the request for three street acceptances, Kingsbury Way, Mayberry Drive, and Birchwood Drive. And then also, I'd like to move to public safety, the request from Wemco for a public hearing related to utility work on Ford Hill Road. That's in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
Kate, we have a motion to move the two aforementioned requests, one for the acceptance of streets, and the other for a public hearing for utility work to public safety for review and consideration. Is there any further comment on these, this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Objections, no abstentions? Motion passes. Council McCoy, could I ask you to, well, I can do this, I guess. Since this is kind of important, we're gonna read this, and I should've done this up front. This concerns the warrant that needs to be signed for our special election October 8, 2013. It reads as follows: "In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby directed to warn the inhabitants of the city of East Hampton who are qualified to vote in special state primaries to vote at East Hampton High School, Settling Williston Avenue, precincts three and four, Whitebrook Middle School, 200 Park Street, precincts one, two, and five, on Tuesday, the 8th day of October, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their votes in the special state primary for the candidates of political parties for the following office: senator and general court, second-hand and ensure district." And then there's just the signatures, and we will date it tonight at the pass, City Council, East Hampton, Massachusetts. This was given to us this day, September 4, 2013. Is there any questions or comment on this warrant? I would, read that in the form of a motion. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve this warrant. Is there any further comment? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes, and I will turn this now over to Council Winnie, for that mayoral appointment to move to.
Okay. Okay. I move that the appointment for Christie Crutchfield, ECA Plus, be moved down to appointment subcommittee for review.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to move the appointment concerning Christine Crutchfield, ECA Plus, to appointments for review and consideration. Is there any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. One more, and I leave it best for last. Council Hagan, you have the floor.
We do have a request for an interdepartmental transfer. Let me do a first reading on it, and then I'll make it in the form of a motion to send it to finance. Interdepartmental transfer dated August 27, 2013. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested, $11,000. It will be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount, $11,000, and transferred to the Gatsby 45 Actuarial Study in that amount, $11,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funding for a mandated post-employment benefit actuary study.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on, did you state that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I did. Send it to finance.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We have a motion on the table to recommend that the following interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $11,000 to provide funding for a mandated post-employment benefit actuarial study be moved to finance for review and consideration. Is there any further comment on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Would you like to entertain? Are we all set? Okay, that's it. We adjourn.
Second.